Brown.
Yes.
Jenkins, is that episode two? Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson? Here.
Okay, public forum, nobody signed up, move through that. Community affairs, did Jeremy leave us anything to discuss?
Nope.
Okay, meeting minutes are in your packet from the meeting of June sixteenth. I'm sorry, that's today's, the sixteenth, June second. Does anybody have any questions about the wording of the meetings? Anything they see needs corrected or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Monday, June second, city council meeting recorded minutes as written.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Marcy, a second please.
My second.
Mr. Tanner. Roll your vote.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Get back to where I'm at here. Did Jeremy leave you anything to report, Gail?
No, he did not.
Okay. Great, Jeremy, move on to your report from your treasures.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, we have quickly gotten to you, Trace, so you're, the notice I said, Stacy, I did not say Bud Zucker. So, you have the floor, ma'am.
I think not.
You're gonna, you're gonna-
Lights later on.
You're gonna defer till later?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Defer until the executive station probably?
Yeah, after the executive station.
Okay, Shelby?
I just have one thing to mention, that's the citywide cleanup, uh, we've filled twelve dumpsters.
What was the estimation? How many do we think we might fill?
Oh, you never know.
Is that, is that a, is that a pretty significant number compared to our past?
Well, seven days for twelve dumpsters, what do you think, Adam? And there are forty yard-
Is that what we had, okay?
There are forty yard dumpsters also. So, they're twice what we used, twice the size of what we used to-
I know between, between Nick and Kelsey and Stacy, I probably filled one of them.
You're only, you're limited to two pickup loads.
Yeah, but they're big pickups.
So, if you add that, you're limited to two pickup loads and you have that much? That means a lot of people participate.
That's all I have to mention. Okay. Chief, you have the floor. Your floor. Tom, you got lots of time to pick up if you want it.
Good.
You guys, you guys have, uh, you have the floor and, I think you got a couple, no, those are down farther down, never mind.
All right.
Go ahead.
Uh, first thing, actually, I'll start with this weekend's crazy keyzey day, um, everything went off on a hitch mostly. Um, we had good luck with the weather, um, we had great support from David and his EMA team, uh, BJ and the Streets team, as well as Chad and the electric guys. Chad especially went above and beyond, he was fantastic that day and did everything we needed and more. So, I just wanna say a big thanks to those guys. First official item on my list is I'm seeking approval of resolution number zero six, one, six, two, five, A, which this is a resolution to join the Central Illinois Land Bank Authority and appoint a community representative. This came up through our Economic Development Committee meetings and we had a presentation by the executive director of the Illinois Land Bank, so, Central Illinois Land Bank Authority, which is expanding and this can help us with a lot of the initiatives that we hope to achieve, including taking all of the, um, fantastic work that Tracy has already done and in addition, you know, in conjunction with the chief in tackling of all the blighted homes and we'll move on to the next level, which is trying to save as many homes that are out there as possible. Joining the land bank gives us access to different tools we don't currently have to tackle those issues, as well as access to, uh, staff and support for going forward additional grants from ITA and other places. Somebody like to make a motion to-
I'll make the motion.
All right, wonderful.
I'll second.
What was it, what was the land bank membership? I can't remember.
Uh, ten thousand.
Okay. Is that annual?
Yeah.
Okay.
For, I, I think the thought process is join it, you know, based on what the meeting that we had, it looked like an alternative to some of the enforcement to determine, you know, do a survey, determine what housing stock is out there, determine what, uh, nuisance properties are present and then see what, what, um, the results are after that first year.
So, one of the things that I'm most excited about is that what they've done in the communities, the communities where they started were Vermillion County, Champaign County, and then now Mattoon has joined and they're seeking other, you know, communities and counties in the area. Marshall and Martinsville are both, um, looking to join as well. Uh, one of the things that they've done in the smaller towns that don't have, um, building codes and a code enforcement officer, um, 'cause it's too expensive, you know, for the small towns to do it themselves, is they've created this network where they use a shared, they adopt the same codes and then use a shared, um, enforcement officer, which is one tool we can do to try to stop the homes getting to the point where they need to be demolished. That's just one of the things that we can do, there are many others, so.
I see, we, we, we've got a good handle on the homes that are, that were pretty much beyond helping and now this will give us a, a way to hopefully interact and find some monies to salvage the ones that can be salvaged, so. We've got a good, we've got a good handle on part of them and this will give us an opportunity to see what they can do to help us and like you said, it's an annual membership, so if we find out it's not working in the future, we just simply unhooked it.
That's right.
So, you've had a motion, you've had a second, now you're all set. Speaking of the devil-
Hey! Have a seat.
A stranger come walking in.
Yeah.
So, um, we've had the motion and a second, so with that, Gail, wait, roll your vote.
Mumford?
Really quick, Steve, Steve is here, we're talking about the resolution zero six, one, six, twenty-five, A, to join the Central Illinois Land Bank Authority. If you want to participate in that vote since you're here now, I'm sorry.
You can, you can, but if you're not sure what to do, so what's going with- The Marcy made the motion, it was seconded by Ms. Carleen. So, it's for us during the land bank to help us get some help trying to work with homes that can be reclaimed or rehabitated instead of some of the ones we've already got a good grip on is demolishing. So, they came, they came and had a presentation a couple of weeks ago and give us the pros and the cons and it went through Marcy's committee and committee, uh, her committee, which consists of her, Carleen and Tanner, I believe, um, thought it was a good idea, brought it up tonight through Tom for a council vote for approval to join the memberships, a ten thousand dollar membership, but they've got all the means, ways and professional status to help us if we have some situations like that to get some monies and or possibly work some other events out if needed. So, that's where we're at. Help rehabilitate the ones that can be reopened? Yes, the ones that can be, can be salvaged. Instead, it's then, instead of the ones that are, like the fifty-two we left out already, like the majority of them down there in your neck of the woods that we've got poured down or getting ready to tear down, they've been busy in your neck of the woods the last couple of weeks. So, that's where we're at, so now we're ready for all the vote.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
All right. Next topic is, I'd like to get approval on the hiring of our part-time tourism assistant. Chuck Mason has started and I think he's doing a great job. It's good to have somebody in the welcome center, uh, we hired him at sixteen fifty an hour and that's for four days a week, um, and up to five hours per night.
We kind of put the cart in front of the horse 'cause it was getting busy downtown. And from previous talks with this group, it was agreed upon verbally that it was probably a good idea. And we get the, tell me what the name-
Chuck.
Chuck, thank you. Chuck is, Chuck's done a good job with it and doing his research and whatnot.
Very enthusiastic.
And he's, he's, he's go-getting, yeah, he's, he's on a sugar high two-thirds of the time.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if he stops treating only at your bakery or whatnot, but he, he, he acts like he's been there on an hourly basis, so. With that being said, then a, uh, motion to approve hiring Chuck Mason as a part-time tourism director as per recommended by our Economic Development Council.
So, move.
Ms. Laurie, second please.
My second.
Mr. Brown, second. Whenever you're ready, Gail.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Mumford?
Yes.
All right, I have one additional thing that's not on here, um, this is another thing that we'll, we'll see when we get to the Economic Development Committee meeting report. I'm bringing this up now just because the time is sort of of the essence, I believe. We went over this, like I said, with the Economic Development Committee, it's been recommended to us that if we want to seek a new hotel in town, which a lot of people think that we should, we need to have a hotel market feasibility study completed. No developers will come here unless we have one of those. And there was a, an outfit who does a ton of these, it was recommended to us by James Arndt, who was working on, you know, finding Shelby's replacement. And so, I have, what I've provided to each of you is the outline of the proposal and so what I'm gonna ask is if you could, if anybody would make a motion for us to proceed with this process.
If we can make a motion, it's not often.
Okay, well then can we at least get, um, can I at least get a voice vote approval to proceed with this process?
Here's what I told the, the folks who's in there, I think it's a good idea, before we vote on it officially, vote to do it, I want to give the finance committee a chance to wrap up their appropriations and see where the money can come from. But, as far as getting approval to let Tom boy in and gather more information as far as what needs to be done, I think that's a good idea to move forward and then, you know, if it gets to the point where here's what we can do, here's what it costs us, then we can bring it up there. That will give the finance committee another, I think we got two meetings left before we pretty well finalize appropriations. That will give us a chance to find out where it can come from, if it can come from and how we can dive, what's what I was saying, not only say diverted, split the cost up so we can make it a viable in our program.
Listen, what is the cost?
So, the cost, the cost of a complete, of the complete feasibility study, which is based on us, the size of our town and its placement in Illinois, is fifteen thousand dollars. The way it works though, is the, to, to do the feasibility study takes approximately thirty days, so within two weeks, you're at the halfway point. If at that point, they'll know whether or not you can support a hotel developed in your town, you only have to pay half. You only pay the full amount if you're, if you complete the entire study, which the study then is not just the feasibility, it gives financial projections and pro formas, that then you can hand to developers for them to, you know, to make their decisions.
So, you're definitely spending seventy-five hundred and you're hoping to spend, you're hoping to spend the next seventy-five.
Right.
So, but I, I, I wanted to complete the, and we gotta have the appropriations done by, you know-
Has to be done by the end of July.
So, we still got some time.
We have the proposal, there's no real additional information to gather, it's just whether or not we want to proceed with, with signing an agreement with, with this person to, um, to have the feasibility study completed.
Do I ask a question now or do I wait till there's been a motion and a second?
Well, we can't make the motion tonight 'cause it's not enough to give, but if you wanna ask, if you wanna ask a question-
Since you're doing appropriations now, would it make more sense to go into appropriations allowing for this?
Well, that's when we get, when we get to where we think we want to put it, we will.
Oh, okay.
So, for the-
Where would it go?
That's a damn good question, I haven't got there to why I even ask yet. It would probably come under the Economic Development, uh, Department monies, which quite frankly, you've got spent already.
Well, then we need to raise that budget.
Well, you gotta, you gotta have the money before you raise the budget, is my, is my point, but that doesn't mean we can't try to find it business district money or something along that- Possibly, if they're at the end-
It should come out of hotel motel taxes.
Yeah, yeah, your hotel motel tax is, uh-
They won't support it.
They won't support it, you've got thirty-five hundred dollars and a two thousand dollar area that we can eliminate, that would give you enough for close to the first half, but then gonna give you the second half.
Kinda come from gaming, something with?
Um-
No.
No.
Not have anything to do with.
No. Like I said, if the state of Illinois didn't have such screwy-ass rules-
What about corporate?
It could, but-
It could come out of corporate, but you got some other things coming out of corporate, you better sit down first and see what we got where. And Tanner's learning how awkward the state of Illinois spending monies are. You know, they, if, if you've got, if you've got a thousand dollars total, but you don't have what you need in one pocket, they don't want you spending. You have to have it in the right area before you need to spend. We can have an, we can have an excess of five hundred thousand dollars over here, that's untouchable for that particular project.
Well-
If it's not in the proper line.
You can-
You could borrow an inter, an inter, an inter transfer-
Depending on the fund, I mean, if it's a special fund, so for instance, economic development isn't a special fund, like water, sewer, audit, like those are special funds that you can't-
Loop out.
Come out for, like, police, you can't take water fund and go to place lunch, you can, so, like, you guys went, did work. But like those kind of more general funds, but you just call them a different kind of fund for record use purposes, there is an option to move funds within your appropriation, as long as you don't spend more than your original appropriation amount.
Which was. And in our appropriation, we're appropriating any budget stay in the black.
Right, but then, I understand that, but like if, for instance, like economic development fund and police, well, police can be deemed a special fund for your tax levy purposes, but like general corporate, you can move those around, you can do an amended appropriation if you find you have more in your general corporate and you need to make a, a payment and then, and, uh, into the economic development fund, 'cause those aren't special funds.
True, but appropriated money is not real money.
Correct.
So, you could appropriate five million.
If you have the money, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
Throughout the year, you can kind of change that around a little bit, just not spend, you, you have to be careful on special funds. Yes, you always have to have the money.
The appropriations are gonna be probably, just from what we've done so far, I wanna guess with the I seventy projects and a couple of other things, we're, our appropriation's probably gonna be somewhere between eight and nine million higher than they've ever been. But just 'cause they're appropriated, doesn't mean you got too much spending. And we can appropriate all we want, hope we have it.
But you can't spend it unless it's appropriated.
But you can't, you can't spend it unless it's appropriated and, and, and what's gotten people in trouble is, you know, it's appropriated, so we can, it's there. Not right.
That was Jason Orville.
Yeah. And our appropriations, we set our, we set our budget at eighty percent of appropriations, so we don't go in the red. What people have a hard time understanding is, yeah, it's appropriated, doesn't mean you got it. We set our budget at eighty percent of appropriations, so for every thousand we, we appropriate, we budget eight hundred. That way you stay in the black and don't go over. So, I'm trying my damnedest with Gail's help to stay in the black. And we got a lot of things we'd like to do, but we ain't got the money to do all of them, so we gotta try and prioritize. And when we get the appropriations all said and done, then we're gonna go back to it, I, I, I feel Tanner and Jeremiah in on this, just suppose we get the appropriations done, we're not done. Steve's not been able to be here for the last couple of weeks, but he's hard, but I'll catch him up. Then you turn right around and you cut your budget based on what your appropriations are and priorities, so you stay in the black. So, there'll be some prioritization coming for what projects we want, can do and that. It's a very worthwhile study and it needs to be done and we can appropriate the monies accordingly, but once it's appropriated, then we gotta go back there and find it in budget. So, but that's where we're at. So, yes, I think it's a good idea, yes, I think we should move forward with the process and it's a good two-step process that we can spend seventy-five hundred dollars on and be told no, which at least we know. Or, we spend seventy-five hundred dollars, try to find the other seventy-five hundred in the first step and hope that they can do us some good, try to find us a motel, which is what we all want. So, I'm assuming that means keep looking. I'm saying that, I'm thinking the others, six others agree with me.
Okay, like keep looking for money?
Okay, well, the money we're gonna keep looking for, yeah. Soon as, soon as he arrests somebody at the money press and we put it in the police department, we'll be able to do all everybody wants to do. In the meantime, can't get it done, that's just pure simple fact. And I've got two, Lori's been on that committee before and knows, Steve's been on it before, that, years past, and knows. Tanner's learning, it's just that there- Carleen's been on it, yeah, you've been on it, we've all been on it. It's, it's, you, 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 and what's hurting us, guys, this year, more so than I ever thought would happen, is we're down from thirty-one hundred people to twenty-four hundred people and the income, even with the different revenues we've got going, just didn't quite there, so. But the guys are doing a good job looking at it, going through it, so we'll be able to come up with those answers shortly. We got a meeting-
Next week.
Next Monday, is that our last one? Unless we have to do some refiguring, I think.
You'll have to fix the refiguring.
That's not our last one, never.
Which our next meeting?
Uh, the next finance meeting is next Monday, but I think we're done with you. So, we're gonna have some additions. Uh, then you'll, you'll, you can show up and come on. Yeah, I kept Tanner and Jeremiah here for two and a half hours the other day and I think he was, that was his second meeting of the day, so he was, I think he was ready to resign.
That was well.
It was a long day, wasn't it?
Yeah. It's all right.
So, okay, keep looking, we're going, we'll keep looking, we'll keep looking for the money, I know, I know what we need and we'll go from there. Uh, do me a favor.
Mm-hmm.
If, if you can talk to them, find out when those monies would be needed.
So, it's a fifty percent retainer upfront.
Okay.
And then at the end of the two weeks, if-
That's, that's what, that's what they go with?
Determining if they're going to move forward.
Okay.
If they do move forward, then it's at the end of the process.
Okay, and the process-
The whole process takes about approximately a month.
That's what I was asking, okay, good enough. Okay, moving forward, anything else, sir?
That's it. That's it.
Um, EMA Director Craig, anything, sir?
Um, this weekend went well. That's first, the second thing is, um, I have, um, the last and final siren to be reprogrammed for nine one one to set them off, will be done on Friday.
Good.
And that's it.
Good. New business, um, we had quite a few committee meetings this last two-week range. The first one, the last one is our economic development meeting that was done on six, four. Was that the last one we had, Marcy, was six, four?
Yeah, we had to cancel one.
Okay, okay, and we got one Wednesday, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, so you go ahead and fill us in on your six, four meeting.
Okay, basically four different topics, uh, the first one is the hotel study, feasibility study, so we covered that, I won't repeat that. The committee was presenting the impact of cannabis tax since the Martinsville dispensary opened, and I don't know if we looked at that before. What would you say the result was, did we see an impact of?
There is a downward trend, we don't know if there's enough data to know if that's seasonal or if that's purely the impact of Martinsville.
Okay. We also went over the rundown for the current plans for Freedom Fest, Friday and Saturday, July fourth and fifth. The parade is ten AM Fridays in antique tractor pull in Thirteenth Park, noon on Friday. Saturday's scheduled, it's the fifth, all in the park, starts with the garden tractor pull, evening at three. Starting at five PM, there'll be food trucks, live music, a beer and wine tent from five to nine, fireworks at dusk. The budget for the festival is thirty-five thousand, thirty thousand of which is for the fireworks display, the remaining five thousand funds for the rest of the event. We discussed the grant program funded by the business district tax monies with the July one, twenty twenty-five lunch date. Three types of programs we'd like to see offered, not to exceed a hundred fifty thousand per year, business improvement, business incentive and revitalization. Business improvement, grants will be limited to twenty thousand each with a matching fund component. Business incentive grants will be awarded to new businesses and involve a reduction of electric utility liabilities or decline in scale incurred on the business property. Revitalization, which we always call, also called dumpster grants, will offer up to one thousand dollars for a large dumpster needed for improvement project. That's all we have.
Though I think that amount may come down based on what we've-
The dumpster?
Learned, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we approximated the, at the meeting-
Five to six hundred.
And we found out there were quite a bit, we weren't as much as we thought.
So, to what, six hundred, you said?
Somewhere between five, six hundred is what seems like the going rate.
Well, that's good news.
We, yeah, we estimated around a thousand, but then I talked to Shelby and some others, so that might, that might give us a little bit more wiggle in there, Marcy.
All right, thank you.
And I did talk to Ken, who's a manager out of Thrive, and, and, um, he said that originally, the impact, the first few months for Martinsville was probably took three, four thousand off of our intake, but now that that's settled down, the Martinsville store doesn't have quite the same availability or professionalism in their store, so they're starting to see some of those customers back, so. I asked him if down the line, if he could give us about a six-month comparison to give us a rev, a better idea, which we'll be able to see on our own figures.
Yeah, those reports, David from Markville, are available.
Yeah, yeah, they're out there, they're out there to get, and she, she gets the numbers every month, so it's, it's nothing that we couldn't do on our own anyway.
Mm-hmm, that's a good idea.
Okay. Are you done with your, with that?
I am.
Just, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We had finance committee meetings on six, four, six, eleven, six, twelve, and myself, Tanner and Jeremiah was here. You want to speak or you want me to?
You go ahead.
Okay. We are making progress, we've got most of the departmental appropriations and budget set. We have got a few others to do, we hope to finish those up at next Monday's meeting on, what's next Monday, I'll be out some like twenty-third. And, um, we had a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, but Jeremiah's gone, I wasn't sure, he's gonna be back, Steve. So, we canceled that and we have to have at least two to be able to do it, so, uh, we've got a meeting on the twenty-third, if you can be here, Steve. And, and we can go from there, that'll be, uh, I think all, I think Gail has got the departments, chief has been in, uh, he, have, have we filled in your blanks? Or do you have anything left?
I've got a couple of blanks left.
Got a couple things left. Shelby, we filled in your blanks, do you have a couple of updates we need to do before we're done with your utilities?
I will.
Okay, so we're getting close, we're getting close, and then Gail, one, one that we not had a chance to look at yet. Economic development with Tom, so that's where you're, when you get these figures you wanna want, bring them in accordingly. We've not done this yet, Gail will help you, so we go from there. And then, uh, hopefully we can get it ready to go, get the notice out, so we can get everything approved, appropriations and budget set by the end of July. That's our goal. So, we'll have a meeting on the twenty-third and probably have to do a final revision somewhere after the fourth, would be my guess, okay? So, that takes care of the finance committee meetings and public utility, Lori, you had that meeting, go right ahead and update.
We had a meeting on the six, ten and discussed the rates for water, sewer and electric and gas. Um, you'll notice on the unfinished business, there is an approval of the ordinance, um, the water and sewer rates have been set. We discussed the wa, electric rates and have come to the realization that we have to raise our rates to keep up with the repair costs, the cost of goods and services and keep this account out of the red. The state average per kilowatt is twenty to twenty-five cents average. Our cost to the public residential homes is eleven cents. Surrounding areas such as Kohl's Mulberry is twenty cents, Norris Electric is fourteen cents and the IMEA average is fourteen point four cents. We have a public, we, the Public Utility Committee are recommending a rate increase of two point five cents per, or thirteen point five cents per kilowatt hour for residential customers and a one point five cent increase every year if necessary. We will still give the one cent per- We will still give the one cent per kilowatt discount as well. We do not also charge a demand fee, heavy usage fee and/or energy charge to our large customers. We've gone many years without raising these rates and have done several studies that have cost us money for these studies for previous mayors to ignore and do nothing about it. Unfortunately, we are at this crossroads and need to adjust accordingly. And then the gas rates we're still working on.
And then, so, city of Effingham just received information on the rate increase. It'll probably take effect in July. From Amrum.
They hammered it.
It's, yeah.
That's.
So, what we're doing here is minimal compared to surrounding.
Pretty, but.
Amrum, Amrum is running at twenty-seven and a half cents.
Steve has all the specifics, but.
Yeah, that's the, the rumor is Amrum's running at twenty-seven and a half, which is twice what we have done. And that gets us, when we, when we work the figures, thirteen and a half cents works out to getting this back even with enough to put a little bit back into reserves for future problems. Because we was down, in electric, we was down how much, Gail? Five, was that, one was five hundred and some thousand, one was three hundred and some thousand, one was two hundred thousand.
Five hundred and some thousand.
On the, on the electric, so we have to do something. And.
It'll still be significantly cheaper.
Significantly cheaper and we, and we're keeping the discount in there. You know, even though we're raising to thirteen and a half cents, we keep the one cent discount in order to be able to show some businesses who may want to come to town, that we're willing to work with them and try to keep it, you know, give them something to work with and look at. We still, you know, in, in twenty-one, we eliminated the forty-eight percent utility tax. That saved everybody about eighteen dollars a month by itself. That is still gone. You know, there was no talk about that. So, it'll, it'll, between that and your one cent discount, you're still giving folks a break. And it's got to be done. There's no way to answer buts. You know, we've got our own on-demand electric, which is purchased through the IMEA, which makes it cheaper in the first place. We got our own crew to work, so we don't have to wait on anybody to come out, you know, after they've finished somebody else. We got our own backup generator that we've got and the money is not for the generator. Some people have asked, well, that money's for the generator and those generators paid for. That's just for operational expenses. And, uh, and go from there. So, you know, that's where we're at on the electric, gas. Shelby and I worked together and had gas locked in. The first contract locked gas in through twenty-three, second contract worked, locked gas in through March of twenty-five. So, we're, we no longer have a lock-in on gas rate.
We're what, looking at it?
We're looking at it, but they're not where we think we want to lock them in yet. We was very fortunate. Shelby did a great job locking, good low gas rates for, for the twenty-one to twenty-three period and from the twenty-three to twenty-five period. And now we're, we're looking again. Because we was paying at one point, three point eight four when everybody else was paying seven dollars. So, we've been fortunate there. We're going to look again. We find a rate, we'll lock it in. If not, we won't. Good news is you don't use a whole lot of gas due July and August. You know, so we're, we're there. So, and he can't leave until he finds a good rate and locks it in. He didn't, he doesn't, he didn't know that till right now.
I like that.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't know that till right now, but I, I will, we will avoid, we will not, we will avoid your resignation until you find a good guy.
And he'll be on standby.
Yeah, he'll be on standby till you find it. You're bad, you're bad. So, but that's where, that's where we are there, so just jumped in there, Gail, or get quick. Is that what?
My name's Laurie.
I would say, that was it, I said it, I said, you know, that's Gail, you're Laurie.
Yeah.
Don't, don't change seats, we'll be fine.
I'm, that's, that's what I, we're recommending, so.
Is it, so that's the in-town?
She's got, they got it there somewhere. There was.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll talk to Shelby and get that.
She had, she had them split up, both in-town, out-of-town, residential.
Commercial?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
They're all, they're all, they're all.
I'm not, I don't, but anyway.
Is it in, is it in the pack that we got?
No, it's in my stuff. I'll just, I'll just email for tomorrow and get it. Perfect. Thank you so much.
So, okay, so that's the new business. We're ready for unfinished business. First order of unfinished business is to approve ordinance number five-eight-four. Find it.
What's five-eight-five? I got a five-eight-five, not five-eight-four.
Well, that's. Five-eight-four should be the water and sewer.
Five-eight-five is employee, five-eight-four is the water and sewer.
You got it somewhere.
Yeah, right here.
Okay, because I don't have that one.
Yeah, right here. Right there.
Okay. Okay, ordinance five-eight-four, amending section thirteen point oh-eight, point oh-one-oh of the code of ordinances of the city of Kaysale, Illinois regarding water and sewer rates to amend the sewer rates to those that were suggested by the, uh, public utility committee to maintain a, uh, in-the-black status and try to prevent future departmental losses. With that entertaining motion for the approval of ordinance number five-eight-four to raise the water and sewer rates as per, um, recommendation of the public utility committee.
Somewhere.
Ms. Laurie, a second please.
One second.
Mr. Jenkins. When you're ready, Gail.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion. Ordinance five-eight-four, rate of water rate increased approved. Moving on, um, tell me through the proper procedure. Need to ask for an executive session for the purpose of the following subjects pursuant to five ILCS one-twenty, slice two C litigation. Section two C eleven, lease of property and section two C six. That's section two C six. Personnel, section two C one.
Okay, and so it should be lease or purchase of property, section two C six. And personnel is for compensation benefits, section two C one. For personnel, you have to say specific.
We'll get those corrections written. We can go ahead and ask for executive selection.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to enter into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Carlene? Mr. Brown? Hold on, miss, hold on, Gail, whatever you can.
Um, yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.